Good evening, folks. Since we noticed this is a council meeting, I actually have to call our council meeting to order. And I will note that five of six council members are here. Jason, would you raise your hand so people know? Lynn, what happened to your? She's getting coffee. Ken and Kathy. So we are currently a six-person council because of retirement. Not that we would want to talk about that. At any rate, so I'm calling the meeting to order and turning it over to Ryan.
All right. Good. Good evening, everyone. Ryan Simmons, Fire Chief. I'm going to go through the list I have for township supervisors. I know some of them have changed, so if I call off from your township, someone that's not there, if you could please let me know that they've been replaced. So Belmont, Pete Bonin. Brian Books. Retired. Okay. Lucas Clayton. Not here. Okay. Elk Grove, Jeff Christensen. Rick Alt House. Dwayne Klein. Okay. Ellenboro. James Brohan. Not here, but still. Okay. Angie Mitchell. Okay. Kevin Tanner. Okay. Harrison, I know I heard Lester Jansen is retired and Matthew Clark is the new chair. Michelle Olson. Still on, but not here. Okay. Lima, Pat Ostendorf. Still on, but not here. Arnold Becker is here. And Leland Sander. Still on. Okay. Platton, Tom Wagle. Dan Smith. Valerie Martin. Okay. Smelter, Tom Renneker. Not here. Okay. And then. It sounds like a, well, we got Terry Slater who's here. And David Sweet, still on, just not here. Okay. All right. And I didn't announce, but for Harrison, also, I guess one of the new is Louis Freeze. Okay. Thank you. So just a quick introduction and then they'll probably talk a little bit about them. I know they've got an introduction slide in their presentation, but tonight we have Laura Eisnagel and Kyle Kramer. Laura is with Wendell Five Bugles Design, who is our architect and engineering firm for our project. And Kyle is with Kramer Brothers Construction, who is our construction manager for this project. So I will let them kind of give their introductions. They have a presentation those will go through. So please allow them to get through their presentation and then at the end of that, we'll have a spot for questions and then feedback from the townships and everybody in the room. So, thank you.
Hi. Thank you for having us here tonight. As Ryan said, I'm gonna put to the next slide. There we go. As Ryan said, my name is Laura Eisnagel. I'm an architect with Wendell and Five Bugles. We are based out of Eau Claire, Wisconsin. A little bit about Five Bugles Design, all we do is emergency services facilities. We do fire, police, and EMS all across the US. This is a really great opportunity. We're really excited to be here tonight. As you'll see when we get to the next slide, we've been with your community now for several years. We were able to come and do a study for you all in 2020 and 2021. So we're just really excited to be here tonight.
I'm Kyle Kramer with Kramer Brothers. I'm part of the third generation ownership in the company. April 1st, we just celebrated our 75th company anniversary. So primarily, we do all of our work in the southwest part of the state. We've been doing that, obviously, since our company was started. It's been in a number of different industries, whether it's K-12 supermarkets, work at the university. We also have a number of volunteer firefighters and EMS that work for our company. So we have a lot of pride in projects like this and work for municipalities like yourself. We will be going over the budget today and kind of the whole how that was all pulled together, but as a company, we just wanted to thank the fire station for selecting us to be their construction manager.
Awesome. Okay, so this is all in that we're going to go through tonight. So we're going to go through a project history. We're going to talk about schematic design. What is it? What we are going through and what would be next? We're going to look at that cost estimate that Kramer Brothers prepared for the station and then again, talk about what's next. Potential design schedule if we were to move forward and potential construction schedule. So essentially, like I said, we actually began with you all in 2020. We were hired with another firm to do analysis of the existing facility conditions. Look at the GIS to figure out where the station should be located and then came up with some concepts and put together a general budget that we could kind of start with. So that was back in 2020 and we came down in 2021 to give that presentation to the council. Oh, sorry. One other thing I was going to mention before I get to in this is I love what I do, so sometimes I talk really fast. So if I'm talking too fast, put your hands up and I'll slow down, I promise. So like I said, in early 2021, we came down, gave our recommendations to council. And then last summer in 2022, we were actually invited back to interview for this actual project. We were awarded it. We're really excited about it. So since that time, we've been working with your, with a great group of people full of city council members, fire department members, and folks from the city itself. To kind of come up with a design and get us to where we are. Through that process, we had to work with the USDA and the appropriations. So obviously, we were appropriated a certain amount of money from the USDA. We had to work through preliminary architectural report to receive that money and then also an environmental report to receive that money. So we worked through that process. And then we came and started actual schematic design. In the earlier part of this year, back in January, Kramer Brothers was brought onto the team to look at constructability and then to look at the construction estimating for us. So that's where we are today. So generally speaking, what is schematic design? So in the world of architecture, we have five primary phases that, thanks. We have five primary phases that we go through on any given project. What we have done up until we started schematic design back in the fall, I would call our negative one phase. It's just trying to figure out exactly what we're building and get to a point that we can actually start design. So the schematic design phase is the big picture items. We know what we're going to build. We have an approximate idea of where it's going to be located and how large it's going to be. Now we need to start articulating that plan. So what we do is we get to this, the end of schematic design, it's a 20% mark, which is where we are right now. We're at the 20% mark. And we stop and we take a look back and we say, hey, is everyone still happy with where we are? Are we headed on the right path? Is it too big? Is it too small? Is it within budget with not within budget? Let's have some conversations. So that's where we are today. So again, it might, in some of the drawings that you see here, they might seem more final than you would expect, but they're not. We're only at about a 20% set. At the end of the 20%, what we end up doing is again, it's not a full document set yet. So we have a written report, which council members should have in your hands. So the written report has narratives for architecture, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and structure. And then it has some really, again, the 20% level drawings for architecture, a site plan, some structural framing ideas and interior finish, floor finish materials, just so we can kind of get a basis of design. It is from that level of drawings as well as past history with Kramer Brothers that they were able to put together then their estimate. So kind of looking at the site. A site in any sort of public safety facility is incredibly important. And the reason that we have to think that it's incredibly important is because of safety. So at any given moment, you might have responders going out, you might have responders coming back in. You might have visitors coming to the station. You might have responders coming to the station. So making sure that everybody has clear and direct and distinct and separate pathways around the site is incredibly important. So what we did is we took the site that is currently the EO Gray facility and put the facility on the eastern side of the property with responder parking in the northeast corner and then return for the apparatus on that north side. All response for the apparatus will then go to the south and will have direct access onto Highway 81. Once you turn off, turn around the corner. And then the visitor parking would be in the southeast corner of the property. So again, we're kind of keeping everyone separate. So visitors can come this way, response goes this way, responders come this way, and then response vehicles return this way. The other things that we have to consider on a site is water retention. So any water that falls in a rainstorm or in a snowstorm has to be retained on that site for a given period of time. That's what you see on the left-hand side there, that circle. That's where we're proposing that we would put that water retention. The other thing that's incredibly important with emergency services is training. So what we wanted to do on this particular site is consider if we were to have a future training facility above and beyond the training elements that we could put inside a building, where would we put it? So we represented that with a square on the site. So that's the site. Essentially, then, what we ended up designing was a 32,000 square foot facility. It is, the proposed construction type is a block and brick construction, so block, seen you block on the inside walls, brick on the exterior to create a nice and durable facility. And then we also consider right away at the very beginning alternates. So if this came in below budget, are there things that we could add on right away? So we did consider doing a basement and we'll talk about a couple other alternates that we considered as well. So the first floor of the facility breaks down into different user groups and you can see obviously on that floor plan back over here, but then also up on the screen, the different areas represent the different user groups. So the red is our apparatus bay or garage spaces. The blue is apparatus support. The yellow is administrative and the purple is community and training. Anything that's in gray is circulation and then anything that is in brown is mechanically related. So zooming in then on the community zone. So right away, when you very first enter into the facility, what we are proposing is a lobby space where we can have some historic displays of different, different parts of your fire department. So what one of our former fire department members always talks to us about is often when you are in a fire department, the only time you see someone is in a tragic situation. You know, there's, there's been an incident. So if we can get people into this fire station and show them some of the great things you do, they get to see and they get to have a much more positive impact by your fire department, which is a really great thing. So we like to have a lobby be a historic display. Let's be proud of the things that you have accomplished and the things that you have done and displayed in that area. Directly off that then is a community room or a training room. So at the current fire station on the second level up above on the apparatus bay floors, you have a training room very similar to this. We would want to make sure that we maintain that. Training is incredibly important for any fire department. So we'll have that training room right up front. Directly off of that, then, we have a small kitchen space, just like you do at your current fire station. So that way we can have community. Like if they did training in the evening, we can have potluck style dinners and then some additional storage space for your community room. Also located off of that lobby space, we have some toilets, both gender specific and then a all-gender toilet in the center and then a mother's room. Just to the north of that, then, the north and the east of that is our administrative area. So in an administrative area, we have an open office for captains or for anybody to file reports and do some generally port writing. We have two private offices dedicated for fire staff. And we have a third, third room right now that is designed for storage, but would be able to be used as a office in the future. Directly across the hallway from that, then, we have a large conference room that can also be used. Just to the north of that, we have our responder apparatus garage. So instead of having a large apparatus space for smaller vehicles such as a command car that might just be like a suburban or an SUV of some sort, we have a response garage in the back, which is smaller in scale to make more sense when those cars are frequently going in and out. In a center area, net blue core, that's where we have our apparatus support space. So at the very top, we have our watchroom. So our watchroom is where folks will be while they are waiting for incidents to happen. If there is like a large storm or something, they might gather there. We'll have monitors for CAD. So you can watch your CAD happening. You'll have some mappings, making sure that you understand what the incident is that you're going to and where it is and how to get there. Directly to the south of that, then, we have our PPE or personal protection equipment lockers space. So we want to get that off of the apparatus bay four. For years and years, the PPE was stored on the apparatus bay, but studies have shown that this is both harmful to the individuals wearing the PPE and the PPE itself. So we like to get that in the center of the buildings. That way it does not have any direct light sunlight on it because the sunlight wears down that material. Very expensive to replace. We try not to replace them if we can help it. And then also making sure that any carcinogens that are in the apparatus bay aren't getting on your clothing that's supposed to be protecting you. In order to make sure that that space maintains health for the rest of your facility, then, that is directly ducted outside. So any chemical or any off gassing that might come off that is not put back into your station. To the south of that, then, we also have our workshop space, EMS storage space, SCBA room, so your self-contained breathing apparatus, so you can fill and clean those devices in that area. And then gear laundry space. So in our gear laundry, what we do is we come in and you can clean your PPE that you've worn out onto the incident. We have two extractors that we are proposing putting in that space, a gear dryer, an inspection table to make sure that your gear is still in good condition. And then a scullery sink to do any cleaning. There's also a washer and dryer in that area so that if there is anything else that might have been on the truck, like truck rag, that those things can be washed in there and not contaminated with anything else throughout your station. Finally, down the hallway, scooting back up to the north are three individual toilet shower spaces. So the industry standard is a shower within the hour for any responders. So if we are able to have responders come back, take off their PPE, their outer layer of gear in the gear laundry space and then continue down that decontamination corridor, then they can wash off their themselves and also take any clothing that they had under that PPE and wash that in that space as well. So this entire area is very typical to what you'll find in contemporary fire stations across the US. The more we have found about carcinogens and about making sure that we keep our responders healthy, the more fire departments have shifted to decon hallways like this. The next thing that's in that little area, just to the south of that, was our training tower. So we are proposing this to be a two-story facility. And so when you have a two-story facility, we have to have at least two sets of stairs. So when we take that set of stairs, if we allow that to be risen up one more level, we have a really awesome training opportunity. So we can dry hoses in this space, which is great, but we can also do different types of low-frequency, high-incident training scenarios such as rappelling, both interior and exterior. We can do standpipe training, confined space training. Really, the the capacity for training is limited only by your imagination. So anything that you think might happen, this is a great tool. Last but not least, then, on this first floor, our apparatus base. So we have seven drive-through apparatus space at this time. If anyone has been in the Platteville Fire Department, which I'm sure a lot of you have, you realize how tight they are, both this way and this way and this way. It's kind of, kind of all crammed in there. So our goal is to make the apparatus space nice and wide. So we're using 14-foot wide by 14-foot high doors to make sure that everything can fit in there nice and safely. And then making sure we have proper clearances between the doors because we don't want any incidents to happen at the station. We want to keep our responders as safe as possible. So on the second floor of the facility is what we are considering. So right now, we're considering that second floor as a basement to only be shelled out. So we would build the exterior walls, but we would plan for the future and making sure that we have dorm spaces for, for when they are needed in the future. We would be building or bidding those dorms as an alternate. So on bid day, you can see exactly what it costs and you can decide at that time, yes, we do want it or no, we do not want it. So this particular moment, what we have designed up here are 10 individual dorms. We have an exercise space, some mechanical space, and then kitchen, dining, and day room. So kind of replacing that hangout space that you have in your fire station on the second floor in the back half, that's what that day room will be. Additionally to that, we have some all-gender, single-user toilet showers kind of scattered around. So folks can use those in a residential laundry area. So another alternate that we had to mention right away at the very beginning was doing a basement. So we're actually doing this basement in two different manners. So one of the alternates is just the shell of the basement. So all that would be down there are the structurally required walls and then roughens for plumbing. That would be our base bid or the base alternate. The second alternate that is for the basement would be to finish it out. So as you can see on this purple plan over here on, on my right or on this plan up here, we have two smaller classrooms down in the basement, one larger classroom, some breakout spaces kind of around, and then some toilet rooms down in that area as well, as well as some additional storage. So this space would be used if there are training opportunities that we have. And then the sizes, you know, if we have a couple different sizes, it could be used for EOCs. Often you need the different breakout areas or again, if you have different classes, the breakout areas will be really helpful.
Right. Thank you, Laura. So before we start diving into the estimated construction cost, I just I just want to go through how design and budgeting evolves throughout a whole process. From left to right, you have less building drawings. On the right-hand side, you have construction drawings. The circles along the top are budget stages we can take in correlation with where the design is in the green circles. From the far left would be a point where you say, we want to build a 13,000 square foot or a 30,000 square foot fire station. Based on costs for square foot history, what would that be? We are past that point. We are, Laura and her team have given us a schematic design set. The drawings are anywhere from maybe 15 to 20% done, somewhere in there. And we've taken that and we've estimated the project. How did we do that? We took the drawings and sent them to key subcontractors in major categories of work. When we break down the project cost, there's probably over 40, almost 50 line items between the site development, general construction, mechanical, electrical plumbing, and miscellaneous items that we are trying to estimate. Early on, we go to subcontractors and they help us out for free to say, what would the project cost be for your division of work? If we bid it out in, let's say, six or nine months from here. So they know what the cost is now with a little bit of inflation factor that they add on to it. Again, it is not bid. We didn't go to 12 subcontractors and get numbers from them because the drawings are not complete at this point. We're just trying to track and see where the costs are going to come in at. So that's where our schematic budget. All along the way, we have to have a contingency factor. Early on, it is higher than it is later on because early on, you're doing a little more guestimating. So you might start with 10%. You get down to a final cost, which everything is bid out. Maybe you get down to 3%. And that covers any maybe gray areas in the plans as you're going through construction and find it as those things come up. So once you get through the schematic set, then you have a design development, which would be the next phase, once you have the go-ahead to go further into the design. Those drawings might be 30 or 40% complete. Again, we go out to major category subcontractors and say, can you help us out with more pricing based on more refined drawings? Again, it wouldn't be bid. Those numbers would be a lot much more honed in. And then obviously, the last stage is final cost, just off of 100% construction drawings. And those are bid out to the market. You receive the bids here and those are tallied up. Those are all to the nearest dollar. So along the bottom, you can see, does this have a laser on it? Want to try it? You just can't see it. So along the bottom, there's the budget type. Thank you very much, Laura. Then the estimating methodology. So early on, it's just historical costs. And then we're trying to start taking more component studies or quantities from your project as it goes further in the design. As the further the design goes, you have less contingency. So again, at this stage, we have not bid anything out, but we have a really good grasp on all the different components that go into the construction. So here's a high-level breakdown of the base estimate. So in the site development, there's about 14 items that we've broken down. The general construction, there's about 22 items, which is basically the structure you're building, the fit and finish of it. Then you always have the HVAC or the mechanicals, which we call plumbing, fire protection, HVAC, and electrical. And then we have 14 miscellaneous items that just don't fit up in the buckets above. Then we have a construction fee, which has been negotiated, and then the construction subtotal, that's 13,120,000. Again, that's with shelling out the second floor, not building it out, and there's no basement in that number at that point. And you come to the three items below, which is FFNE, fixtures, furniture, equipment. Those are what you call owner soft costs. They're not managing the construction budget, but Lauren and her team helps the client kind of figure out those costs. Then their system and networking and then design and engineering fees, which is based on a percentage on the construction costs. So at this point, the schematic budget on the schematic design is just under 15 and a half million. And then the notes on the side, like I said, it's just a base estimate only, doesn't have the basement. And then changes the project scope after bid opening. Those things cause additional cost resulting in change orders, but we're not to that point yet because we're just estimating. Then we were talking about the alternates. What would it be to add the unfinished basement? I believe that's somewhere about 9,000 square feet. Because of where the site is, there's a little bit of soil retainage you'd have to do along the east part of the, the property to hold back because you're close to the street. So you can actually in structural ability build the basement. So it's just some cost we had to factor in there. And again, it's unfinished. Like Laura said, it's just the structural walls and the MEP roughens to get to that point. Then to finish the basement out, all the flooring, the walls, and everything else is about 500,000. The finished second floor is about 875,000 and why that's a little more in the basement, it was a smaller square footage. You have a lot more walls and finishes and bathrooms, which cost a little bit more cost per square foot. If you eliminate the training room or community room, not saying to do it, that was the cost savings measure we were just discussed. Things we can look into is maybe valley engineering, the overhead doors, maybe some of them stay glass, some of them are a combination of glass and a insulated panel. And then we were asked if they had a decorative flake epoxy flooring and apparatus bay, what would that cost? It is roughly 105,000. So what's not factored into these costs, if you didn't end up taking them, is the slight percentage of design and engineering you'd have to add to it. But this is really both. Number three is the add alternate bid pricing. When you have the hard bids, whenever that's in six to nine or whatever that period is from now, once you have the bid date, those numbers are usually good for 30 days. There was a point about a year ago where subcontractors, because of the material vendors, couldn't hold it for that long. But the economy has kind of stabilized a little bit right now to where they can hold them for the 30-day bid period like they used to in the past. And maybe I should save a step back of just the state of the economy of where it's at. Obviously, everyone knows in the last two years, the inflation we've had. There was a period from about 2010 to 2020 before COVID, where if you're doing estimating like this at a high level, you could easily say 3% inflation and you might be a little conservative at that point. It was actually 2.6% averaged over 10 years, every year. Since 2020 to now, it's been up from a construction standpoint about 30%. Obviously, much harder to anticipate where costs could be going if we kept on that steep climb of inflation. From what we're hearing from bidding out projects every other week is labor pricing, obviously, that stays at a steady increase every year, just no matter what. Material pricing and equipment pricing has somewhat stabilized. It's not taking the steep increase in price like it has been. So it's a little bit easier for the subcontractors that help sell the pricing here to guestimate where it could be in the next six to nine months.
Right. So I guess one of the things that's always really important to know is where do we go from here? And one of the things that happens often is we get to this point in design and people are like, hey, you know, it's a little bit more than we want to spend. So then the question is, can we make it smaller? Absolutely. We're at a 20% set. So if there are things that we need to start shrinking and looking through, then that's what we can do. So here are some numbers from four different stations. Relatively recent that the program square footage that was in your concept to what was actually built are kind of significant in some of them. Some of them weren't as big of a reduction down, but that is a step that we can take and that we will take as part of due diligence for the project. So there are a couple post schematic design estimate considerations that we have written down here. So things that we want to look at is just confirm how that site is going to work for us. Obviously, we have a site plan laid out at the 20% mark. But are there any changes that we can make to make that a more cost-effective site for us? Confirming room sizes, so making sure, you know, does they do the offices? Are they all correct size? We'll throw furniture in there, kind of really looking how it's going to function. Can they be smaller? Should they be bigger? Confirming quantities of spaces. So we have currently two offices with this room for a future office. Is that the right amount? Triple checking, just making sure. Because once we start building, obviously, we can't change it then or really more, much more difficult. And then confirm the alternates because like Kyle said, the alternates will actually be designed. So whether or not we accept them on bid day, we still have to design them through. So like I said, we have five phases of design. Concept is our negative one phase. Schematic design is our first phase, which we are just finishing up. Next, we move into design development, like Kyle said. So he said 40%. We like to go closer to 60% for a design development, just so we have a much more accurate plan set. Then we go to construction documents. That's when we actually draw the blueprints or the plans that you're going to be building from. After we go to construction documents, we work with Kramer Brothers to put it out on the street to go for bidding. Once the bids are open and we have approved and can move forward with the construction, then our design team will stay with you all for construction administration all the way to occupancy. So looking at how long this all takes. Generally speaking, schematic design is one of the parts of the design that our schedule really ebbs and flows. Some groups, it's about eight weeks. Some groups, it can be a year. We've been working on this for quite a while because we did have the USDA component. So that's why it looks a little stretched out. But eventually, once we get to design development and construction documents, then it they all go on a pretty tight schedule at that point. So we have about eight to 12 weeks for design development, about the same for construction documents. they all go on a pretty tight schedule at that point. So we have about eight to twelve weeks for design development, about the same for construction documents. Once we put it on the street for bidding, that is a one month period. And then we get to do groundbreaking. So after bid opening, it's usually about a month for mobilization and approval of contracts and all that jazz before we actually get to do the groundbreaking. So once we do the groundbreaking, um, what we are proposing doing is, I don't know, do you want to talk about this part?
So if we stay on the design and kind of evolution and having a bid package per se to our, our game plan was to be to, to raise the existing building and get the, the building site just basically pad ready this fall and come back in the spring around March or April, whenever winter stops and spring is, has begun, which is always a, uh, if you have a crystal ball, I'd like to know when that's going to be every year. Um, and then get into the construction. We feel with this construction type and material procurement, all those other factors that go into construction, it's about a fifteen month construction period at this point. If we can make it more efficient, we will know that more when we have the bid day and you have an understanding of which subcontractors on board, how long it's going to take to get the material and equipment procured, so we can get the construction compressed as, as fast as possible. Um, if you do have the basement in there, it might take an extra two months because there is obviously digging out the foundations, putting in the whole basement, and then starting level zero and going from there.
Um, so then we reach our last two phases of construction, which are substantial completion. Um, that substantial completion, we come back through and we do what's called a punch list. So we make sure that everything was done the way it should be. Now, in theory, our punch list should go pretty quick because we'll have been on site every other week, watching and monitoring the construction. But the punch list is just the official check. Everything's working. Everything's balanced. Everything looks good. And then occupancy is usually about a month later. So again, like Kyle said, um, this construction schedule and the design schedule, they're all flexible. So if there were certain things that we really wanted to hit target dates that we needed to hit, we're always flexible with those things. So with that, we'll do questions. I have been told that I have to repeat your questions, so please bear with me when I repeat them. Yes, absolutely. So the question was, um, with the ten dorm rooms, could they be used for full time employees in the future? And the answer is yes. So our hope with this project is that we don't have to come back in a couple of years if the department were to change from uh, volunteer staff to a career staff, that this building was ready to equip it. In the meantime, if there were incidents, like let's say we know that there's a blizzard coming and there are things that are happening, your volunteers could absolutely stay there and use those dorms at a need be basis. But this, this facility would be set up to become a career station if at any point in the future it needed to be. So the question is, um, how much of our construction materials will be local?
Obviously, local is different for every, um, um, project. But a lot of the materials you can typically get local are your concrete. I know Barrett's in town here. They'd obviously have the opportunity to supply material pricing to all the concrete vendors. Um, you're lucky, you do have a decent amount of like electricians and earthwork companies in the area, but for the most part, I think you're going to have some subcontractors traveling. The hope is you get as much local participation as possible from a material and subcontractor standpoint. But sometimes it's just the nature of the beast that some will have to come out of Buick, some will have to come out of Madison, potentially even lacrosse, um, to get the work here.
Yeah. And I just have a quick follow up on that. So when we are designing a facility, we also look to local suppliers and local vendors. So I've already been contacted by a number of brick vendors. I've been contacted by, uh, vehicle exhaust extraction vendors, a whole bunch of different vendors. So we'll start to consider those things as well. Um, and then in terms of the interior fit and finish materials, um, unfortunately, not everything is made here in Wisconsin. If it was, we would definitely use more of it. Uh, some of the materials will have to go as far as Georgia or South Carolina for like carpet. We don't, we don't mill carpet here, uh, in Wisconsin. So we have to go that far away, but anything that we can get locally, we do look at that and we do definitely consider it. Did that answer your question? Yes, sir. I am going to, um, flip really quick to my structural engineer. I did call him and talk to him about this. So there are a couple of different things that we have to. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Um, so the question is, in nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty, we had, uh, straight line lens of a hundred and twelve miles an hour, and how are we designing to deal with that? So there's a couple of different things we're doing. So first of all, when you go into the world of commercial architecture and design, we have a different set of codes that we have to work with that are outside whatever you have to do for anything, um, on your residence. So automatically, we're above and beyond anything on your residence. So then, because we are an emergency services facility, we have to go above and beyond what the code minimum is for that. So because we are a, um, just trying to make sure I have the right number here. Uh, because we are an emergency facility, we have to have, um, allowable winds of ninety-three miles an hour up to a hundred and twenty miles an hour before there is damage to the building done. Nope. So that's, yeah, so there's allowable and ultimate. So the ultimate is one hundred and twenty. It's not to say that if it hits a hundred and twenty, the building is going to blow over. That's one of the reasons that we do the block and brick construction because it is very sturdy, very strong. Um, so that is, that's the way that the, the wind criteria for the Wisconsin State Building Code twenty eighteen is. Yes, sir. So again, we, so the question is, there was an F two and an F five within the area. Um, what are we going to design to for our building? So we would design to code, which would be, um, a risk category for and an exposure C. So in human terms, um, again, when I talked to our civil engineer, he basically explained that's an F two is what we are required to do here. Now, um, if you did want to have a portion of the facility designed for an, what's called an, a, a traditional storm shelter, an ICC five hundred rated storm shelter, we absolutely could do that. The thing about it is though, is when you get to that level of storm shelter, construction more than doubles in, in cost. So instead of being, let's say, at like three hundred dollars a square foot, you're closer to nine hundred dollars a square foot for that structure to be rated that. So when we do do the ICC five hundred storm shelters, which we do have to do in other states, Minnesota adopted that code, Wisconsin has not. But other states that we work with, Ohio, uh, Illinois, you know, other states that we have worked within, they have accepted the ICC five hundred code. So what we end up doing is making a much smaller portion of the facility rated to that level. Now, when we're doing that, uh, a great spot that we could consider in your facility is that central core, where we have the decon lockers and the decon, uh, laundry space and then the decon showers. There are a lot of requirements that we have to have within that. But like I said, Wisconsin did not accept that code. But if that is something that your department and your city really deems as necessary, then we can absolutely design and construct that. Yeah, keep going. No one else is asking questions yet, so it's all you. So I, I mean, I guess I would have to understand what your definition is. So a roof would be a fully adhered, any, or EMPD roof membrane that is adhered down onto it. We do then have tiebacks in different areas from the roof to the walls and then the walls to the floor. There, I mean, I can't think in any detail that I've seen where we have rebar that runs continuous and locks all the way down and through. I would have to look. Yeah. So what we are, well, oh, sorry. Oh, my gosh. So what is the roof? Is it a flat roof, pitch roof, flat roof with slope? Um, so what we are proposing doing at this particular time is doing a flat roof structure on the living quarters, non, in the non apparatus space. It's a flat roof where then the uh, rigid insulation on top is tapered down. When you go over to the apparatus bay portion, then we are doing what you would look like a flat roof, so it'll have a parapet on the exterior. But that structure will be slightly pitched in order to slope the water down, and then your insulation can remain, uh, even across the whole thing. The reason we aren't doing it in some parts of the facility and others is just because structurally it ends up being really challenging. Yes, sir. So the question is to be. Yeah. So the question is, do we consider the areas around the property of impacting our building, uh, in a tornado situation? So, yes and no. Um, we did take a look at the exterior area. We've walked the site. I'm a runner. I've run around your site several times. I've driven around your site. I've walked through the existing building. Um, so I understand the different buildings that are around it. Um, if we were to do that ICC five hundred storm shelter, what we would have to do is any hole larger, I believe it's a three inch diameter hole, would have to be, um, what they call missile impact protected. So all of those openings, any ductwork that goes in there or any drains that are over that three inch mark, those would all have to have dampers on them that would shut during an incident. Your building at this particular time is not done to the ICC five hundred for the whole thing. So if there was something projectile through, a brick and block building is a very sturdy building. It's going to take a big, major impact to get through that. However, the glass is not. So anything could potentially projectile through the glass, and we are not planning on protecting or covering that glass at this time. Now, if that's something that the department desires, we can absolutely consider that. But again, there is, there are costs associated with it. Any other questions? Yes. The doors? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's a great question. Okay. So the question is, um, the overhead, uh, the overhead garage doors, um, can we explain them a little bit more? And then also are there documented, uh, histories of utility costs with the overhead glass doors? So a couple of things. So basically, what we're looking at here is a um, insula, or the, sorry, I have to like retrain my thought, getting off structure, going to glass doors. So overhead glass doors, what we are proposing doing here is an insulated glass panel door. So it is a high quality insulated glass panel door. And when you have, when I, I have been in these facilities and I've went up like right up close to them, I don't feel anything really coming through. So in my opinion, they are very well insulated. Um, doing was strictly for cost savings is on the north side of the facility that faces the residential area. And so having glass doors like this that are shown here, we might have, because right now there are seven panels left. We might have only one of them be glass and the rest be solid. And it wasn't as much for
Our answer is that in this particular, uh, case, and it provided for in the budget, it's a full building, uh, emergency generator. So, um, a couple of things about the emergency generator. At this point, we are considering natural gas, correct? Okay, I have to double check that. Sometimes I forget. We're not that far in design yet, so have been drawn. But, um, you're considering a, a full building, a emergency generator, uh, that will locate it outside of the building on the northwest side of the building, and it will have a structure around it. So when you were talking about, um, can that get through to, uh, hurt it or damage it? It will have block and brick around the exterior walls. Will not have it, so something potentially come down on top of it. Uh, like that is probably not that great, but it will be protected. Uh, and that protection will also help the neighbors to make sure that any sound noise that does happen from that, it's also uh, blocked a little bit more and a little bit more. And then also the problem with the ice source that we won't have to look at a large generator because it's going to Yes. Yeah, we're not that far along in the diagnosis. I'm like, we are doing that, right? Yes, we are. So located somewhere on the site, we'll have to have a transformer. We'll have to have a primary. You're looking at most of that on the north side of the facility. Like I was ready to talk architecture and not every other, but, um, on the north area of the site, right by, I think I can't see it. But just to the northwest of the facility, we have a little box that's drawn that's one color. So that will be our, uh, generator and dumpster enclosure. And then just to the north of that, we'll have our cabinet, our transformer, and any other electric. So that's what we're. Yeah. So the question is, is it financially capable for us to consider solar? Um, yeah, it absolutely is financially capable to consider it. Uh, whether or not you decide to do it is another story. Now, there are a couple of different things you can consider. Consider it, um, just right away as a face bid, help plug it in, have it there right day one. Or you could consider it as an alternate that gets priced for it. Building is designed to take it both structurally and electrically, to make sure that it can connect through and actually helpful to the building. Um, so you can do that on bid day. Third option is that we design the building for it, knowing that the future you want it. So everything is again structurally capable of taking it and everything electrically is structurally ready to plug in. Um, when it's the next phase of design, design development, if it's something that you're interested in solar, what we can get is get in touch with one of your local solar providers. Is there, there's, without a doubt, there's a solar energy provider down in the area. Um, we can work with them to talk over the different types of systems. And then what they can do is they can kind of do a return on investments or ROI to make sure that, you know, how many years it's going to take to pay this off. Is it worth it? How much do you want to do? Um, you know, the great part about fires You know, the great part about fire station, you have a big apparatus bay to put a whole bunch of panels down on to like to do that absolutely. Yes, sir. Yeah, so the question is, right now the exterior facade is block and brick. Have we considered different alternates for the exterior envelope? The answer is, we've considered it and we're looking to consider. So a couple of things that always get brought up, metal panels get brought up quite often. One of the things about a metal panel is depending on what the skeleton system or the structural system is, metal panels can end up being expensive with brick. And if anyone has seen metal panels blow to the ground, they'll get damaged. So brick tends to hold up really well, especially right off the ground. We could consider the metal panels higher. But one of the things that what we did right away early in design is aesthetic benchmarking the department and with the few things members that were on that panel. And we really liked a more traditional looking facility versus having like metal panels. So what we did then is sort of shift our focus to a block or a brick or something that's a little bit more traditional. Once we started looking at block and brick, because of the way that this building is designed, it kind of unglues, it kind of breaks the thoughts that way you don't have this gigantic two-story structure right in a residential neighborhood, you know, kind of back that second level. And by doing that, it sits so that if we're to consider architectural precast tip-up panels, like you see on like distribution centers. The reason that those are really great for distribution panels is because you can print a lot of them. Might have 10 different panels and there's 100 of each. So that way you get that repetition and then they become really cost effective. This particular project, you don't have a lot of repetition. And so because of that, those panels individually get quite expensive. The other thing that we really want to consider when we are looking at architectural precast, here are our precast panels we made. And one of the challenges that we have in this region of the state, and this isn't just this region, it's a bunch of different areas that we worked in, is our closest precast manufacturer that would build a facility of this is probably over here like St. Peter, Minnesota. And so when we consider how far away that travel distance is and the road costs, the trucking costs, between the lack of repetition and panels, and then the distance that they have to give you, it ends up actually quite expensive. So we did look at precast panels. We wanted to look at a different type of brick. So instead of just doing a traditional brick, we wanted like a panel brick that wasn't like wasn't precast large panels, we could absolutely sort of that still. And we'll continue considering the exterior facade and develop it through the next phase of design. Yeah, I would have to do some research on that. I don't know. Oh, sorry. My question, what is the cost comparison between natural gas versus in-floor radiant? And the answer is, I'd have to do some research on that. I do not know. What I do have is I do have utility costs from a station that we built in Squamaco, Wisconsin, which is up near Green Bay. Similar facility. They had six apparatus bay instead of your seven. It was a two-story facility. Just a little bit smaller, about 20,000 square feet. And I can go utility costs if you'd like to see it. But the in-floor radiant in the apparatus space and then a five-foot perimeter around the exterior of the non-apparatus space, it ends up being a really efficient system for us. When we looked at, yeah, I'm betting. Yeah, so we have looked at other types of systems, you know, considered geothermal and other departments. Again, fire station, all day, every day. It's all like, I love it. And the interesting thing about geothermal is fire stations unfortunately at this point aren't a great candidate for it because you have so much space things and so little When we get into the design development, if you did want to reconsider it for this, we could absolutely do that. But at this particular moment, looking at past history of other clients and other project types, it has not paid off. We've only done two weeks. So it's actually good for the thermal because of that balance. The in-floor radiant, besides being nice that we are hitting the objects instead of the air, hitting the apparatus bay, the other major advantage of it is that it will dry the floor really quick. So if any water comes in, so I would be like today, you all have the rain that's out on North that I saw going down here. And those apparatus come back in and they're dripping or they're covered in snow and they drip down, that in-floor radiant will help melt that and dry it so fast. So it's much safer for your responders as well. We're gonna, we're gonna have like a contest here. Sorry to tell you. Yeah, okay, so there was two questions there. The first question is, how many, how often on departments of this scale do you have the doors on both the north and the south for true drive phase? And then the second question is, have we run any cost estimates to eliminate the earthwork and doors on the north side? And just have everyone drive in, because we're absolutely correct, Ryan, and his crew will have on painting team backup skills. So I'm going to start with the doors first for the bad, the drive. So at any given time, we're probably working on 10 to 15 different fire stations. And of all of the stations that we're working on right now, I have, I have one that is not to be drive, drive out of state. And that is because of the site that they are on and because the size of the apartment that it, you're in. You're in a really small area in North Carolina. And their site is really small and you have no opportunity to drive through. Other than that, everybody is going to drive through because it is the safest for your responders. It's just to pull in and kind of back it up. So in terms of safety, I'd recommend it now. What we have done, and it'll segue into Kyle's portion of cost, what we have done in other stations is we have done that back area as an alternate. So on our station in Ohio, which again was a similar size, it was either five or six apparatus bays. And then the living quarters off the one side. What we did is we had the north doors and the your apparatus apron. And in this case, you drove around the facility to get into it. So that drive, your apron and all the doors were one alternate. And then on bid day, they ended up accepting it because their bids came in so favorable. Now, in this particular project, because of the slope change, that might be something that we could consider. Just making sure that if you want to do it in the future, you weren't able to do it in the future. That would be the biggest thing. I would, you know, caution everyone that when you're considering alternates or considering cuts, what is your long-term plan? Because the worst thing you can do is move into a building and have it already not functional. You know, we don't want to build the building you have with a bigger garage. We want to build, build for the future. So cost.
More than happy to look into the costs. Pull together the budget. It wasn't on the table, but this is something that we look at this item, any people next year facade or any other item that we can try and save costs, it could be options. So.
Yeah, absolutely. So that wasn't as much of a question as just a general comment, making sure that we're looking at this and this being responsible. And making sure that we are actually looking at the growth, to make sure that what we are designing isn't, you know, pipe drain. It's actually what we have. And are there different alternatives? Just taking the community room off now, having a facility designed to accept that in future and putting the training room up in the upstairs shelter space. Given the time. So absolutely. So there are definite considerations. And that will be in this next phase, and where we've been really diving design development, looking at different alternates like that. You know, taking off one of the apparatus bays and business alternate that quite often on different departments. It is actually remarkable how many different apparatus have in your fire station. What we would like to do is them four spaced out so it's safer for your responders. And we'll space them out. This apparatus thing is actually pretty cool. So I don't know that we can take more than one day off, but we'll definitely start looking at that to make sure that it's possible. Well, the gentleman in the green hat has questions too. That's a great question. So the question is, are we talking basement under apparatus area or the non-apparatus area? And at this particular moment, what we would propose is the basement under just the non-apparatus spaces. So typically, not under, not for the apparatus bay. No. No, we haven't, you know, you can do it. Obviously, you have parking garages, so you can do it. Doesn't always work the best. And we have gone into so many fire stations where they put a basement underneath the apparatus bay and that has failed. So our idea of best practice is that we leave the basement away from that area. Yeah, you can still do it because it's within the concrete, but it would be more challenge, definitely. But yeah, it would you find a way to do it. But no, the idea right now is that anything in the blue and yellow, and the blue and yellow actually is where it is. So if you can see where the two stairs are, the one on the north and the one on the south, kind of show where it is on the actual big one. So it's just, yeah, it's not even the training room. Yeah. Absolutely. So the other thing that again we'll consider when we're looking at fiscal responsibility is, you know, is all of that basement necessary? We'll have to have the two stairs down there. So we have to connect those somehow. But no, could take it back so it lines with the western edge of that support garage. We can knock it over and see what we have in that basement and how it's going to function and make sure it's actually functional space. We will have to have, the question is, is there any requirement for elevator when you go to the basement? The answer is, you actually have to have an elevator if we go to the second floor regardless. So because this is a government building and it's more than one story, have to have an elevator. If we go to the basement, we still have it. It gives you that reason. Okay, sorry. No. We have not looked at that exact cost, but if that is desired, we can absolutely do that. Oh, the question was, is we consider the cost specifically for the two car support garage space on the north corner of the facility? The answer is not yet. But if you'd like us to do that, it's good. I think it should be Ryan. Yeah. So if you couldn't hear that on the microphone, please contact Ryan with any questions or comments. We'll filter them into us. Yes. Yes, sir. Oh, so the answer is, and here's the thing that we were talking about, will it be a rubber? Yeah, it will, the, the top quote that stands a rubber material. Exactly. Yep, it's a fully adhered system. So it's, it's down. You might be familiar with like a ballasted system where there's rock on top. So we will not have the rock. It will just be the fully adhered. It's all stuck down and then well, well, it's over top of it. Does that make sense? Okay, good. Yeah, I, so if you've had that experience with rock on it, the challenge that I have is get a hole. But how do you find it? So then you have to rake all the rock away and it might cause another hole. We prefer to stick with fully adhered. Problems are that the water is, there is then water. Any other question? Yes. Yeah, so this was a two-part question. The first was exiting with our response vehicles out onto Adam Street. Have we done our turn rate guy to make sure that that works? And then the second is what kind of alert system will particular traffic have? So the first question is, have we done the turn rate guys? We have. One of the things that we look at besides just how it turns is how the roadway sees one another. And the challenge that we have with And the challenge that we have with Adams is that has a very high crown. So we've been working with Howard and with Joe and some of your other folks at the city level to make sure that the Adam Street can be modified in order to make sure that we can make that turn both radii and in terms of the slope of the crowning of that street that's there. So we are working with them on a project, aside from the fire station project, to make sure that that roadway is wide enough there to accept our large vehicles to roll through. The second question is, what kind of alerting will be in that intersection and the surrounding areas in order to make sure that people are knowing that because our company, so there's a couple of different systems that we can consider. And when we get to design development, we'll start looking at them more. But often when we have community, there's fire stations in residential areas like this, what we end up doing is having a system that when call comes into the station and it goes through their CAD system and alerts everyone to come, they hit like a trigger is made at that moment. And then they know so many minutes after that, or nine seconds to go from the time a call comes in, the way you're pulling out if it was a career station, that at that point, flashing lights would happen at different areas. So again, we haven't gotten that far in design for your particular facility. But we have been talking about, you know, put it to the west, we put it south, we put it off. How do you make sure that people know? Often, you know, you have a couple of stations that have done those. They've been really successful. Other stations have not. It really depends on what your business area. Yes, sir. So the question is, is the property to directly to the response apparatus still considered purchased? And I am going to say that I do not know that. It's outside of my scope of knowledge at this point. Yeah, so right now, we are working with the site that we have. So the comment we've made that if we were to pull that building closer to the south, that perhaps it would be less expensive construction because we wouldn't have to deal as much with the slope. And then it would be safer because we've been pulling it onto Adams before we turned onto the highway there. Great question. Of that particular move? We have not done that analysis yet, but we will do that analysis as well during the next. If that is third by the district. Yes, sir. So I don't know what utility bills are in current. I don't know what they are right now. Oh, I'm sorry. The question was, do you know what cost savings is? Or if there is any like, because this is a much larger facility versus a much smaller facility, is there any costing? There's, you know, what are current? I'd have to get back to you. I'd have to get back to you. Like I said, what we have is we have utilities from other departments that are similar in size. And we get that to Ryan and Ryan can compare. But yeah, off the top of my head, I don't know because I don't know. I would imagine that when we did it in Marshall, that was dramatic. And Jim Schmidt is one of my counterparts at Five State. He's got all those numbers at some point there at the time. And it's like wild how different that one is. That's good. Yeah, so it really depends, honestly. I'm so sorry. So the statement was, with our experience, what has the return on investment been for solar traditionally and other fire stations? My response is, honestly, a lot of our stations haven't gone towards solar. So I don't know off the top of my head. Now, what I know is we're working with Chisholm, Minnesota, which is up in the Iron Lake, northern part of Minnesota, that we're putting in a rate in there. And I'd have to remember what the numbers are because we got them probably months ago. But we are putting in a rate there that will eventually pay for itself. So our return on investment for solar panels is that if it's not within 12 years, it's not feasible. And they are doing it, so it's definitely the 12th remark. But I don't, I don't remember. I remember what the cost was and how many panels there were, but that doesn't do anything. So one thing to note on this slide when I get through is that was the program. So we are technically past programs. We've already cut some, but we have opportunity to cut more still. So this slide. So with these particular ones, the question, it wasn't really a question yet. I'm assuming the question's coming and while the question's circulating, I'll let's kind of explain. So when we very first come to a department, what we do is program. So we programmed with your department in 2020. And then we double check that program again this summer when we started again. So what the program is, talks through every type of building or every type of space that we've seen in a fire station and talks through like, is this realistic? Do we just want it and get your wants in? And then what we do is start kind of filtering out just the wants and really focusing on the needs. So some of them, when they did their programming, they had bigger pictures of mine. Others were more realistic right away at that program. I think your department was pretty realistic. So we have come down a bit. I'm not expecting the Swamaco program. That was a huge drop. But you know, if there's some low-hanging fruit that get out of here, 34,000 square feet, you can absolutely pick that out. But if it's much more than that, it's gonna have to like cutting off something. So it really became a, oh, I'm so sorry. This is so hard, getting the question. Question is, Greenfield and Swamaco obviously had major cuts. And how did that happen? So what it really came down to with, so Greenfield specifically, what happened was they were a volunteer department and what we did is we just shelled out some space. So some of that was shelling out spaces, but others just no, because responsible, like the gentleman who acted said there. So we really started asking them the hard question. You only have enough apparatus to fill three bays, why are you asking for seven? And I don't know the numbers off the top of my head because it's where a couple of years ago. But it's really just like honing it in. The other one with Swamaco is we started on a site and then the site kind of changed. And when that site changed, it was much smaller, so we had more compact. One of the things that our firm really likes to do and really concentrates and emphasizes on is a lax circulation. We've got a huge circulation space because it's big space. So we like to make sure that it's rec pathways out to the apparatus bay, but it's not a lot of hallways like a school. Like that's not very functional for a fire station. So, you know, just making sure that we are really tight up those designs. Like I said, looking at the quantities of a room. What, 10, 15, 10 doors or could we get away with eight? We have three offices, do we really need three or could we get away with two? So it's having those conversations. Sometimes it's difficult conversations, but we have to add to make sure that it's the right size. Very much for coming today. We feel like I talked to you all. We appreciate.
So thank you Laura and Kyle for the presentation tonight and answering the questions that everybody had. And thank you for everybody for attending tonight to get information and get your feedback. As it was mentioned earlier, I'm gonna be the point of contact for gathering information. And we encourage each and every one of the townships that are here, you know, other community members, as you look through the information that's there. Yes, there isn't, there wasn't hard copies for everybody here tonight. The information will be posted on the city's website under, go to the platville.org website, click on Fire, and then there's a webpage dedicated to the fire station project. I also have a flyer there from our fundraising steering committee that is working on those efforts that are in back. It has a QR code for the techie folks that you can use to hit cheer on your phone. That will take you to that website as well for information. We will get presentation from here tonight as well as that schematic design report on there. And then Jody will also work to get a link for the recording of work session tonight too, so that all that information will be available. I have business cards back as well. Encourage you to get them if you don't have my information. But we want that feedback from, so if you look through this, you find something or just a question, hey, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? You know, maybe we haven't. So we encourage you to send that to us, you know, as much detail and the information we, feedback we can get back from everybody. You know, we all have a common goal, you know, that that common goal is to, you know, work together. And I'm positive that, you know, we'll end up with a safe, functional and an appropriate bar facility to protect communities that we do, you know, when we're done with this. So, but that takes us all working together to accomplish that. It is not. So time cards, otherwise it is firechief@platville.org. So it's easy to remember. As long as you can spell platville correctly, you've got it, man. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. But otherwise, I just wanna, you know, let everybody know and encourage that, you know, the fire department leadership along with 105 Ugo's Design, along with Kramer Brothers, along with, you know, other city staff, you know, Shannon, the great asset to us as our building maintenance specialist. You know, he has a long history of construction. He can, he can give us some great tips on things to do. But we're gonna go through every bit of spec, every room, every space. You know, maybe we find that we could reconfigure a space for, that had three doors on it and we can relay it out that now we only need two doors. You know, every penny that we save is a penny saved. So be confident that we will work to this and we'll get to, to that point where we need to be to accomplish. Yeah, so Gene wanted to ask if we have asked these other places where they, they got funding and the options for them. And we have done that. And there's a lot of difficulty when it comes to that because one timing when it was, you know, all different avenues. I mean, there's not a common source of funding, I think, for any stations that have been built. They're all kind of a little bit unique. You know, I think that's kind of where Laura finds this fascinating is there's, there's not two identical fire stations she's probably ever built. You know, they all have customized to the needs of the department. So, you know, but we are constantly looking, looking for options, ways to get funds. So it's grants, you know, we know that we don't have an unlimited checkbook unless somebody knows that somebody that has, you know, unlimited funds and they're willing to get us money, send them our way, you know. We'd appreciate that. But otherwise, you know, we're constantly looking at grants, you know, through the inspiring communities and the fundraising efforts of the steering committee. They're, they're looking for grants. We've got grants from other entities looking for them where, you know, Barb and the council members are constantly looking, talking to our local legislatures, you know. And we encourage, you know, the townships to look at, maybe there's some opportunities for grants that are specific to townships that maybe aren't available to, you know, a city. Or, you know, we've reached out to Southwest Tech to see if they maybe have some grant opportunities for that training space because that is training. You know, we cooperate or do a lot of training with the technical college. That's, they offer all the fire service training. State of Wisconsin comes through the Wisconsin Technical College System. So they are actually partnering with us to train with us. So, you know, we're looking, trying to pick up every stone we can and see if we can find something in there to help us all try to reduce that cost out to get to our end goal. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Now, like I said, it is a partnership amongst all of us, you know, seven townships have served part or all of, you know, as long as, as well as the city. The person, you know, so it's a big area that we cover. We are in this together and we work together to get to that point, you know, and that's critical. You know, whether it be from tapping into financial companies that the city works for, maybe they have some options that they can recommend for townships to look into or stuff like that. You know, there's, there are financial folks that do this for their, for their living that will, will help guide us along, help us get to that point where. Thank you, everyone.
My name is Brian. Kyle, and as they said, send your feedback, fire chief at platville.org. We have cookies, we have food. And from a council standpoint, I need a motion to adjourn. And a second, and so we are adjourned.